And then say, um, just, uh, this meeting is going to be recorded. Let me go down here and say it's okay, but that's not so. Yeah, anyone that's joining you guys is gonna just see you at the podium. We zoomed them on camera. It looks good. Yeah, I'm saying anybody that comes on, when you want to start your presentation, you can, because we're zooming, we've had the, the camera on you guys.
Again, we will, so, this is the National Civil Rights Town Hall meeting titled Vote Back to the Future. Coming here from the beautiful October, the back line center of Howard University. The house, several people on Zoom, and with a preliminary presentations course, then I'm going to invite all the people that are waiting on land for us. Uh, we have, we, we dedicated this particular town hall meeting to discuss the next segment of the community to direct the travel business space. Because of this town is what was just social justice causes as well as, uh, fact of this event for social change. And also I'm going to make a presentation today, which there will be a continuation that I'm told. Uh, here in the round just stands, like, the business, Carol Lattman. The Latin insights fill home along, two of my brother Julian, Julian Lattman, are being invited today and us presenting them with the induction into the National Civil Rights Hall of Fame service, which culminated during the weekend at Howard University. This gives our administrators, when we back in town, commit four presentations, and the lasers in their time.
Civil Rights Lab Library does, which is to reinvest in resources and tools that can educate people. But but even then, you are absolutely right. There are systems like our educational systems that perpetuate the very things that we're marching against. But here's the irony, I don't want to be critical. We are marching away from our homes. We're spending time away from our homes. This is why I didn't do it this year. I did it ten years ago, but I didn't do it this year because, for example, people need to run for school board. If you want change, don't march to Washington. Walk to your school board and protest at their meetings, which they did with me. So so I'm advocating this time around that we do those things that make the dream happen. And what those things are is, like you said, we improve our school systems. And when they don't improve, we protest them. And when the protest doesn't move, we run for school board and we make a difference.
There you go, there you go. Because remember, the right wing people around this country are now banning books. They're running against everything that we thought we had fought and won. It's being reversed now and our children are suffering from that. I believe honestly that ninety percent of the young people who are committing violence in the streets of around this country are either pushouts or dropouts from the public school system. We have schools in the city of Chicago, high schools with two and three hundred people, young people in the schools. And those schools were designed for a thousand fifteen hundred kids. And now we have two hundred, we have no libraries in summer schools in Chicago. We have no counselors. We have no first aid people, no security. This has got to stop because otherwise we're gonna suffer even more than what we're suffering now. And we need a strong, strong movement to change this condition.
And let me, let me tell you about the schools. Yeah, they have an agenda and they are moving it into state legislatures against our schools in terms of voting. But we have to be equally aggressive in terms of promoting our schools. And again, William, you know, I'm down for the march. I was there in two thousand thirteen and I support the work that others are doing this very day. But really, unless people go, and I said this in two thousand thirteen, unless people go home and do the work that we're talking about here, nothing's gonna change. You know, so if you're not satisfied with, nothing's gonna change. DeSantis and his folks are doing what advocates do. We just have to be aggressive about the importance of, for example, educating our children about their rich history. There's a movement that would suggest that that is inappropriate or that's, you know, to the left. No educating people about African American culture and infusing that into our textbooks, our lesson plans is an important part, not only about giving children of color pride, but educating white citizens about all the great contributions you said earlier on. They'll mention Martin Luther King, Malcolm X. What about Mary B. Carr Batum? Or what about, you know, Ida B. Wells? What about Fannie Lou Hamer? All these folks that made a significant contribution. What's the guy's name? Garrison, the guy who invented the traffic, I think, the traffic light, Benjamin Banneker. So much more that our children can learn about. I always say our children, I'm talking about white children, black children, and have pride.
Right.
In that part of America, you know, oftentimes people talk about, well, and there's no need to melt black folks, white folks, Italian folks, Jewish folks altogether. We make a powerful America when that stew keeps the integrity of each and every ingredient.
Well, let me just tell you a story. About a year ago, I was, my friend of mine and my cousin, they were both lauding the fact that I was one of the people that pushed the study of Black Studies. And they said, you know, we may have, we might have been better off if we had started Black Studies at the kindergarten level rather than at the college level. Isn't that ironic? And I hadn't thought about that. Absolutely correct. We should have Saturday schools for our children. We should have after-school programs for our children. We should not listen to DeSantis and all those crazy people who wanna wipe Black history out of the punk school system and out of sight anyway. I mean, can you, can you really believe how stupid and how racist it is to say that slavery was a benefit to African people?
Right, right, it's crazy.
That's absolutely insane, you know? And it's a curse to us as African people. And we cannot allow that to happen, no way. And we gotta, we gotta change those things.
When you start examining in history, the work and beautiful participation in the change of America of people like Sojourner Truth, Harriet Tubman, you not only learn about their contributions to America and the freedom of America, but you also learn about things like virtues like courage and determination. These are powerful concepts that people don't often associate with us. That if you had a more broader understanding of American history and a more detailed examination of people like Daniel Hale, a brilliant surgeon, if I understand that correctly. The blood bank, the blood bank was started by an African American, am I not right?
That is correct. That is absolutely correct.
And ironically, here's the thing about that, I'm trying to remember the brother's name, but you know how he died? He died because they wouldn't give him a blood transfusion. And he started the blood bank. So we have made some amazing contributions to America and oftentimes we were not recognized and sometimes we're punished, notwithstanding that fact. So, you know, very few people in this country can report on the wonderful, determined history of their people like black folks can. We've been through a lot and I should say a lot of groups have. But we've been through a lot and we've come through standing and shining and our children, who are suffering, are going through a lot, need to learn about that because they can get that kind of determine determination to continue in the face of adversity.
This country would never have been what it is technologically, culturally, et cetera, without the input of our ancestors. I think about that, that every branch of music in this country has come from African Americans, blues, jazz, rap, fifty years of pop music we're celebrating at the moment. All those things will come from us. And I think about Elvis Presley, who copied African American music and made millions and became internationally famous on it, you know? And our children don't understand all of these things, you know? Our dress, we set fashion, you know? Why is it that we as adults and elders do not push these things with our children? We've got to because in addition to pushing the public school system, we have to do it as a people. And I agree with you one hundred percent. We have to not only march, but we also have to go and change the laws. And not only vote, but also, you know, go to the county board meetings and city hall meetings and state legislative meetings and fight, fight, fight with the kind of courage Dr. King, Malcolm X, Reverend Jackson had to change this system because it is hurting us very, very much. And our children are acting the way they are because they have no idea as to what kind of courage our ancestors had to bring us to the point where we are now.
Well, and William, if I can add one other thing here, as I sit in court and I know you asked me to talk about criminal justice and criminal justice reform and I probably spent, it would appear that I've spent little time talking about. But in fact, what we've been talking about, reform in terms of education, providing our children what they need is criminal justice reform. Because let me tell you this, and I knew this long before I got on the bench, that there is a nexus, there is a connection between education or the lack thereof and what I see in the courtroom. Many of these folks, young and old, who come into my courtroom, don't have an education. They've either dropped out, they have not gone back to get their GED and they struggle to get those jobs that one could get if you had a diploma or a college degree. They don't, because it's not part of their family history, they don't see the aunt, the uncle that went to school.
That is true.
In fact, they often see the aunt, the uncle, the mother, the father. There's a connection between this, making the dream of a good education a reality and the dream that Dr. King had and the dream of criminal justice reform. To the extent we can make our schools better, and that's why I ran for school board years ago, because I believe that was foundational to changing our society. That to the extent that children had access to an equitable education that the kids in the suburbs have, they could make Dr. King's dream happen. You know, he talked about without regard to the color of the skin, but I'm sure he would say today, without regard to the zip code that they live in, children should have a good education. And when they have that, they have a better shot at the dream. So I do see a connection between education and criminal justice reform.
Precisely, because again, as you said, Judge, nine out of ten of those young people who come before you in the courtroom are either dropouts or pushouts from the public school system.
Yep.
Many of, many of these young people don't even know how to fill out an application for a job. They don't, they don't read the papers to search out and find a job. I mean, so, and I blame a lot of that on us, you know, as a group, not individuals. Because, but as a group, we have got to revive the vigor and the determination of Dr. King and Malcolm X and push and push because otherwise we're gonna go further and further back.
Absolutely. And you know, the name of this panel discussion is The Road to the Future. And ironically, I believe that if we're literally taking this analogy of the Rosa Parks Bus, that, and you can see it there, there's a rearview mirror. I think one of the ways we go forward is by looking back, right? From that rearview mirror, we can see the road that we've traveled and we can see the distance that we've come as a community. And we can learn from all these folks that are listed in this chronological description of the Civil right?
Right, right.
We can learn from it. So by looking back,
And understand it.
We're able to look forward.
Okay, I want you both, because you've been on the same time, Dr. Starks and Judge Wayne. Talk just briefly, if you could, about, if you see like, give us your take on it. Thank you in the urban centers of America.
You go first.
Well, we're in a very serious period in American history and in world history. We're on the verge of a, you know, the possibility of a nuclear blast. You know, and we have to look at the fact that while this country is spending billions, with a B, billions of dollars in one country, in Europe, Ukraine, and probably less than a hundred billion a year on the whole of Africa. And we are allowing, sitting around and allowing China and Russia to invade, invade Africa with their own agenda while we are sitting around and not paying any attention to it. We need, as leaders in this country, we need to force this country to take another look at Africa because African migrants are trying to get into Europe, they're dying in the seas across the world. There's drought, there's COVID, there's Ebola, there's hunger. All these things are happening to our people in Africa. So we have to combine our fight for our freedom because it's a parallel fight. We will not be free and flourish and thrive unless we begin to have a parallel fight for the people of Africa. And that is something that our children need to understand because they don't understand it. You know, they don't even understand civics. And Judge, you know this better than anybody. Civics is not being taught in the public school system. We gotta have that as a requirement, that they understand the government, how it works, and why vote, the whole bit. Secondly, we gotta have a requirement that geography be taught in the public schools. There's a loss in those two subjects and they are extremely important. Because as my grandmother used to say, if you don't know where you've been, where you come from, you don't know where you are and there's no way do you know where you're going. And that's so real. Dr. King preached that every day, absolutely.
Yeah, there's not much I can, there's not much I can add to that. I would begin by simply saying what you said. You can't know where you're going unless you know where you came from. And for people of color, particularly African Americans, there's so much to look back in that rearview mirror, as I said on this bus, about, that can make us proud, that can make us informed. And once we see that, going back to the continent, and when they took us off the continent, the strength, the determination it had to take to survive that transatlantic trip and to face the brutality in Virginia of discrimination and racism, one can even get from that immense pride and the strength of a people that can endure all that for centuries. But, but the interesting thing about what you say is that we don't really have an appreciation of that. And to some extent, perhaps because of what was done, we were cut off at birth as a people from our birthland. And so you don't, you won't see us pushing an agenda that seeks to help our ancestors and our ancestors' people on the continent the way, interestingly, other nations do. I mean, you hear about the Russian military and this auxiliary force that apparently that leader just was passed away on that plane. Well, people don't, they were, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they were aggressive in Africa, having control over them, is that right?
That is correct. They were taking the diamonds and the gold out of Africa and driving the people now. And it's my understanding that they would go into an area where gold or diamonds was being taken out of the ground and they would, they would take it over. And if the Africans resisted, they'd just shoot them right on the spot. And they were taking the gold and diamonds and selling it and making millions and millions of dollars.
My only, my point is, my point is, other countries who don't have a lot of people from that continent are very aggressive about what happens in that country, on that nation, on that continent. And we historically have not had that kind of interest. And I'm not talking about colonial interests. I'm talking about just taking care of folks who don't have medicine, who don't have food. And so to the extent that they are my people, they are Americans. America has an interest in that, not because we want the gold or the diamonds, but because we have a connection as Americans, African Americans in particular. And America should protect those interests and those human rights as well. And I don't know that we've done that aggressively as we've done it. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it in the Ukraine. I'm not saying that, not taking any political position, but I'm saying, I don't think there's that history of being as aggressive in other countries and countries on the African continent when it comes to simple things like quality of life issues, water, food, issues like famine. When other countries that have people from those nations, America has a tendency to get more involved. And I'm not saying don't do that. I'm just saying, as we always say as civil rights lawyers, be equal, be equitable in your treatment, America, of all people.
There you go, there you go. I mean, the reality is, most of our children don't understand that every single mineral needed to keep a technological society running comes from Africa. Do I have to repeat that? Every gold, diamond, copper, all of that comes from the Congo. It's one of the greatest depositories of all those minerals. And they come from us, yet we are still suffering with the poorest people on the planet. And there's a connection. We, those minerals and the labor in Africa has made Europe and America rich beyond imagination. We need, that's why we need to teach geology to our children so they understand that. Because they can be pushed for change because, you know, we're getting old and we're gonna be gone, but our children have to carry on the fight. Dr. King talked about the relationship between Africa and, in fact, he was on his way to Nigeria to help, you know, change that fight between the Nigerians. And he was murdered in nineteen sixty-eight. Malcolm talked about the relationship. Reverend Jackson has been, you know, was considered one of the major American ambassadors to Africa. So these are kinds of things that if our children really understood, I think they would fight harder and refrain from hurting each other through carjacking and shootings and all this other stuff. I really do think that we could. And your life would be easier in the court because you wouldn't see thousands of African American youngsters people coming through the court system in simple stuff like theft and acquisitions, you know, of things that they should not have.
Amen, that's true. I don't think I heard the question.
Did you hear the question?
Could you repeat it?
Yes. Are we doing enough insofar as improving wealth in the urban centers of America? Do you think we're doing enough? Or what else should be done?
Well, William, it would take a three or four generations ahead of us now for African Americans to catch up with whites in this country in terms of wealth and income. And so until we can get our children motivated, educated and involved, we are never going to catch up. I mean, look at homeownership, the basis. And the judge can tell you this without any doubt. Our children don't know this, that the base of wealth in any country, particularly in America, is homeownership.
Homeownership.
And, and also, and knowledge and understanding of the economic system. That's why education is so important. So, and the fact is that we are being discriminated in jobs. Within the banking industry, we just outlawed redlining in this country, but there's still a, still a subtle form of redlining here going on in this country. So, yes, wealth is important and we are behind and we will remain behind until we can get our children educated and understanding what the economic system is and how it operates.
William, that's a great question. And it would take a panel, was two hours to just begin to touch the surface on the importance of wealth and entrepreneurship. And I agree with the comments that we are way behind the eight ball on this. Other cultures who got here before us and even come here after us have gotten ahead of us. And that's, that could take an hour or two to talk about. But let me just say, from my experience as a judge in terms of property ownership, I, I think that the data is in our community, Rochester, New York, probably about sixty percent, sixty, sixty-five percent of the people in this community are tenants. So that is consistent with the pattern of redlining, I think, of poverty that was created centuries before, or decades before, folks rented their apartments. But we are seeing, as judges, we have a jurisdiction of criminal matters, but also of landlord tenant. We do landlord tenant cases. And it's some of the most frustrating work that I experience every morning. We're doing our best to address it, like, for example, our administrative judge, along with a very huge foundation, Greater Rochester Community Foundation, created this basically kiosk right outside my courtroom door and the courtrooms of other judges. And if a person is being evicted, we do what we can to provide them and their landlords with the kind of support that they need, right? But one of the things we do for tenants is this kiosk. They can literally leave my courtroom, go about a hundred feet and find the resources or find the direction to those resources that they need to help them get on their feet and keep their apartment, like finding a job, right? A lot of times, that's the cause of people losing their apartment. Finding daycare that's affordable so that you can get a job. A lot of these folks can't afford the daycare that would be worth getting a job for. So drug and alcohol addiction, a lot of times folks get derailed because, not because they don't want to keep their apartment, but there's a substance abuse issue. So the beautiful thing about this initiative is literally, I can be, I can put off or adjourn a eviction for some other legal reason, but I can send the tenant outside the door of my courtroom and he or she can get some help in terms of identifying resources. The other thing is, again, I want to go back to this conversation about not necessarily being in Rochester, but doing things in your own community. Run for a judge. I ran for a judge and I've always had this vision. We got this big, huge courtroom, this wonderful marble that surrounds it, the atrium. So when you come out of each of these eight doors, nine doors, there's this beautiful area that's huge. And I often wondered, when I used to be a prosecutor, a defense attorney, a civil rights lawyer, why aren't we using that space? So I went to our chief administrative judge and I said, hey, Judge, can, can we have a job fair once every quarter? So that when people come out of these courtrooms, they can apply for a job. We're gonna have our court, our first, first of its kind, job fairs, October the fourth. When people come out of these courtrooms, they can apply for a job. They can apply to go to schools, a college and career fair, that literally. And no, I'm not gonna be like saying, you gotta go report. Literally, it'll be right there in the face. They can choose to stop and apply for a college, apply for a job, right outside the courtroom. And let me just say, the reason why I was thinking about this is I was, we had this opportunity to make it an entrepreneur fair as well. But because the number of tables that we have available to fill up that space have already been taken up, we've decided that we're gonna propose to the administrative judge an entrepreneur fair at the next, in four months from now. So there are things that you can do if you get elected or if you work for a mayor, because our local mayor is helping us with this job fair. Or if you're an administrator in a college, one of the area colleges is helping us with this career. There are things that you can do when you come back home from the March on Washington that can effectuate lives, change, to make dreams come true. Including creating businesses.
That's one of the major things we gotta do, is create businesses in our community as well as throughout the downtown areas and throughout the, these cities. Because as you stated, there are people who get off the boat in one year and in a space of a year, they have a business. And many of those businesses are in our community. They're robbing us.
Yep, that's true, that's the truth. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go on, I'm sorry. Our children must understand that, you know, that we have got to get businesses. We gotta learn as much as we can about. uh as much as we can about the economic system and how it operates. And uh we cannot totally rely on the traditional ways of uh getting uh funds and uh from banks because they discriminate. So we gotta bust open that system and make sure that the banking system uh gives loans to our young people. Uh and we have to fight for that, because otherwise we will be out of, out completely. Uh isn't it, as you said, stated, it's ironic that you, a person from anywhere else in the world, Europe, Asia, uh can come in uh in twenty twenty twenty, and by twenty twenty-three, they have gotten loan or gotten money from somewhere to open a business, and that business is in our community.
Yep.
That's it, you know. Let me give you an example. In Chicago, in nineteen uh and and nineteen eighty, there were, when Robert, when Harold Washington was running for mayor, we had businesses all over the city. We had service stations, uh clothing stores, uh you know, cleaners, et cetera. Now, in two thousand twenty-three, there's not a single black-owned service station in the city of Chicago. Now, I think you can talk about Rochester, somewhat in the same. I don't know a lot about Rochester, but I know there's a big university there. But uh how 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 is it looking in in Rochester?
Well, you know, years ago, you may recall that Rochester was the home, the serious corporate home of Kodak. You all know about Kodak.
Absolutely, Kodak, absolutely.
Kodak has has been through some rough times as of late, and unfortunately Rochester didn't prepare as well for Kodak's struggles. Kodak essentially continued to believe that it could rely on paper photographs. And as you all know, the world changed a couple of decades ago and went to digital. And a lot of people don't know this, but Kodak actually had the patent for digital photography, but wanted to protect its bread and butter, which was film. And the, I believe that legally the patent expired and other folks from other continents took advantage of that. And now you know where Kodak declared bankruptcy a couple of few years ago. So things have not been the same. But what's interesting, you're also right about our college environment. The number one employer now is not Kodak or Xerox, which was Rochester's home, or Bausch and Lomb, which was Rochester's home, or French's mustard, which is Rochester's home. The number one employer now is the University of Rochester, right? Uh they are our number one employer. And now, let me just say, William, uh uh and to your guests, we don't have to turn our backs on th- those folks, and they don't, they don't always turn their backs on us. For example, the University of Rochester supported, when I was on the school board, the creation of a school, still run by the school board, uh called East High School, right? And it had a thirty-nine percent graduation rate. And when we asked them to take over the running of the school, five years later, that school, which was the worst performing school in the state of New York, a thirty-nine percent four-year graduation rate, had an eighty-seven percent graduation rate. So my my point here is, there are corporations and feel organizations can, will turn to when we're ready to do that um entrepreneur fair at the Hall of Justice. Again, unprecedented. Who has a job fair at the Hall of Justice, right? That's the beauty of being elected and having the opportunity to do those things that are not anti-legal. They're actually empowering people. But when we have our second fair, it will be an entrepreneur fair. Now, here's the thing, you can turn to people to support the dreams of individuals. There is a guy in Rochester, his name is Thomas Galasano. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of him. But I believe he's a billionaire. And how he became a billionaire, he started this company called Paychecks. I don't know if you've ever heard of this, but they're basically, yeah, they they basically do paychecks for small firms. I believe he is a billionaire. He is a very conscientious, considerate person. When I first came to back to Rochester, he was helping uh the community at the time I was working for our mayor as sort of working on anti-bias initiatives. He ran an organization on on the part-time when he was building his business called Greater Rochester Fights Back. But here's why I'm mentioning his name now. I think he's retired. He's not the CEO of his organization, but he's still very wealthy. He has just created an entrepreneur school. Literally, he's created an entrepreneur school. Who do you think I'm gonna be calling to ask him if he can attend or have his staff attend an entrepreneur school? So when these young people and older folks come out of the courtroom, many of them are as intelligent as, and some, some maybe brighter than Tom Galasano. And they have the capacity and ability, but just don't have the understanding of how to make it work. Imagine a young, old person who's been fresh, coming out of the courtroom and learning that he or she can enroll in Mr. Galasano's school to become an effective entrepreneur. Man, that's gonna be powerful.
It's very powerful, and God bless you for pushing that, because that's exactly what our young people need. And and let me just uh emphasize again, we, there are very few schools in this country, particularly in black uh neighborhood schools, that teach finance and economics. And that's vital, very vital. And our children need to understand that. They really and truly do. How to open a bank account, you know, all kinds of just simple stuff that we take for granted. Our children don't know.
That's true.
Very sad. Uh huh. Well, uh William, I, my phone is about to go dead. So I gotta run, unfortunately.
As we don't speak long, I know you like, I know the power of electronics don't last forever. So we gotta fast forward to trying to deal with the company's political issues before you leave and and touch one after the other. So and we'll put a summary together among us, and not reviews and zoom man, and get it out quickly for my family, but I wanna cover a few more topics before I let you guys go, if we can get there. Uh we're we're watching today to celebrate the sixteenth anniversary of the March on Washington. And for both of you guys, what are we sixty years later?
Judge, you go first.
Uh the question was, what, sixty years later?
Uh we're here this weekend to celebrate the anniversary of the sixth, actually, the sixteenth anniversary of the March on Washington. And I ask you guys, I guess I'm explaining, sixty years later, what are we?
Well, I I I, my hope is, uh I'm gonna plug this sixty minutes apiece, um that uh Monday, which is the twenty-eighth, two days from now, I will tell you, I hope where we're at is that people will have gone back to their communities after participating in that wonderful anniversary march and done something that could affect some young child's life of five years old sixty years from that point, you know what I'm saying? So if you tutor a child or you read to a child, sixty years from now, that child, and I'm talking about a parent, a grandparent, a neighborhood volunteer, the library, if you develop, the 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 literature, the research is very clear, William, that if a child has a love of learning, a love of reading, if they're proficient at reading, by the third grade, they will graduate on time.
There you go, absolutely correct.
To 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 answer your question about that sixth time in a row, if they come back home, if all those folks are probably worth hundreds of thousands of people, ten percent of those people went back to their homes on August the twenty-eighth, Monday, at three o'clock, when Dr. King gave his speech and just read to their child or somebody else's child and continue to support that child's love of reading, sixty years from now, that child will be the grandparent of grandchildren that love to read. That's that's my point. This doesn't have to be done in Washington. In fact, if we're gonna make it happen, we're gonna have to ma- make it happen one child at a time, one book at a time, one school at a time, one job at a time, one college at a time. Uh that's how I think the future changes, by what we do at home, not what we do in Washington. Sixtyminutesapiece.com, if you do something on the twenty-eighth, Monday, at three o'clock, even just for an hour, log on and tell people what you're doing.
Very good. Amen, amen. And I'd just like to underline uh what the judge said, it's absolutely crucial that we uh grab our children, take, well, not take away, but at least encourage them not to stay twenty-four hours uh on the the cell phones, uh playing games and and watching craziness on television, but read some books. As I stated, unfortunately, in the city of Chicago, we have schools that had, don't have libraries anymore because they are not like, they they said they can't find librarians. How do you learn without being, not being able to read? It's insane. It's just, it's illogical. So I agree with Judge. Get our children reading, learning, and understanding the society they're in and understanding where we've come from and where is it we need to go. And with that, I have to go. Thank you, William, and thank you, Judge. Pleasure.
Nice hearing you.
Nice being here. Bye, Rick.
But Judge, I'm gonna put this question to you, and we're gonna close it out, because you guys individually can be a part of putting this something together, unless, okay, we can. Now, I'd be remiss, a lot of people knew kind of these things, and this question had to be on the wood of the mind. And there is reparations. If I'm not right, what's your take on it before we try to close this out?
William, you're asking me my opinion, my opinion on reparations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um you know, uh this is gonna sound like a flippant answer, but I haven't given it much thought, you know? And the reason why is, I believe, I'll just speak for myself, and I know that there are hundreds of thousands of people are the same. I'm in the vineyards, trying to do the work. Um and I'm not, you know, and don't take me wrong, for those that do support reparations. I just haven't thought about it. I'm I'm so busy trying to make it happen for my family and for others. I don't charge anybody to get in this bus. I don't charge anybody to walk into my museum, four thousand square foot museum. Um that that's not where I'm going. I I I did my law practice. I, you know, the old biblical phrase, to much who've been given, much is expected. I I returned that back. I wasn't, and I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm not saying that our people aren't entitled to some reparations. Other groups have been given that. I just, to be honest, I haven't given it much thought. Uh my belief is, I I got a mission, and I gotta make it happen for my family and for my community and for those that I, this bus has traveled from Rochester to um uh uh Florida. And I paid for it, my, from one school in Rochester to a school in Florida. And I paid for it myself. And how did I pay for it? I paid for it because I sued somebody for discriminating against somebody and settled the case and took some of the money and put it into this bus. So I I, you know, reparations has, you know, there are people who are much smarter and more intelligent, more committed, and they have addressed that issue. It's just not something I've spent a lot of time with, William. I just like, let me, let me do what I can to make what I can to support my family. And this is equally important, and sometimes frustrating to my family, make sure that whatever I get, I give to others.
Judge, uh thank you, and we'll make this announcement, do what I've talked about. Judge Ben White is formally inducted into the National Civil Rights Home Fame on April fifth at our thirty-seventh anniversary in MLK in Chicago, along with two fine institutions, one I've been to a lot, one that graduated from. Fine period at Howard University, along with Jackson State University, Mount Hymenon. These two, these two institutions of higher learning, along with Judge White and a host of others known as that have made contributions the way they have. Will be formally inducted into the National Civil Rights Home Fame at our annual thirty-seventh anniversary, MLK Day, uh Friday evening, April fifth, twenty twenty-four, at Mount Piers, the Christian Baptist Church, which is the home of the of the MLK gangs. So Judge, I know that I talked about it, circle the date, April fifth in Chicago for the induction ceremony, along with the Rosa Parks Fund. We did talk about your break, and that that will be a week of 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 uh history knowledge for your boss, along with your being inducted into the Home Fame, where in your gold place, by this time, this lack of will have died, I'm raising my breath. Uh but these, along with these two fine institutions, will be inducted into the National Civil Rights Home Fame. Howard University in DC and Jackson State University in Jackson, Mississippi, where we'll make a public announcement on tomorrow on our law laws, that you guys participate on April fifth, twenty twenty-four, in Chicago.
William, very briefly, it it it's just such an honor and and to you and to your colleagues on the National Civil Rights Library. I'm, I cannot even express in words, and I'm a person of a lot of words, as you can tell. I don't even have the words to express the honor and and the graciousness that this would be bestowed upon me. The work that you and 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 your organization have done uh just makes it an extra honor. So thank you very much. And I'll save the rest of my words for time in April, and we will get the bus there to you in April. Thank you so very much. I'm very honored.
Thank you, back on the field. And we will put the transcripts of this town on me to be available when individuals can order them on, right? We should have them ready by late February, by by late September, when Judge just began. So we're must, you, Doctor Stotts, and myself, and all the other participants that didn't, that probably saw us, or they have not seen anything, will weigh in and put together a comprehensive, comprehensive summary of this town, I believe, to make it possible. We'd like to thank Mr. Spencer Lee Senior for his charmed efforts towards civil rights and social justice policy. And so sad, a couple of weeks, I believe, again. And we didn't talk about game violence, but that has to be a part of our summary, because in the history of town, we we started a debate, and we ran over our town then. So we must go. The van, Judge White, you and I will be talking this evening and tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
All right, thank you.
For keeping score here.
Your judgment would feel like this country's gun.